In order and sorry for the delay. So I would like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, the media, the media, and anyone who is joining us in person and electronically. And in person for this, for this committee of the whole meeting. Today committee, committee is meeting at Shire Hall in the council chambers in Picton. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motion on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.on.ca. Under Agenda Item Four, I will be asking for comments from the audience. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks at pecounty.on.ca to register. Today, there are four registered comments from the audience. But if anyone would like to speak at this session on the agenda present at this meeting, you may do so. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and posted on to the county's website. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of May the ninth, 2023, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable exits in the building or wherever you are tuning in from. For those at the council chambers, please mute and limit use of cell phones. Now can I get a motion to confirm the agenda today's meeting? Counselor St. Jean, Counselor Prinzen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. St. Jean Prinzen motion that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of April twenty seventh, 2023 be confirmed.
All in favor? Gary. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Being none, will have comments from the audience. And the first comment is Kane Rutgers speaking on items, or on item five point one regarding memorandum of understanding with Prince Edward County Minor Baseball Association. Kane, if you come up to the microphone there, give your name and address and you got three minutes.
You know, some of you, if not, nice to meet you. I'm here on behalf of the Minor Baseball Association. I'm the new president, leading the new team we've put in place. We're looking forward to going ahead with the season.
You got three minutes.
So we're looking a minimum of three years of in-kind use on the ball diamonds. In return, we're providing gifting our equipment that we've used in the past years. Our association is growing. We just need the help from the county going forward as far as liability and maintenance of the fields. We're looking for in-kind use because we're able to keep our registration fees very minimum. Our youngest age is fifty dollars versus Balvo's youngest age at a hundred and fifty dollars. I hear lots of comments from parents that it is very affordable for them to be able to put in all their multiple siblings, kids into the organization. Myself, we have four children, they're all on ball. We're able to keep the fees low, so it makes it much manageable. We're looking forward to going forward with the help, but that is what our association is looking for, is in-kind use for a minimum of three years.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Kane? Okay, thank you. Can I, that was the only one, I believe, right? Can I have a motion to accept the comment from the audience? Counselor Maynard, Counselor Pennell? You want to read that or just?
Maynard, Pennell motion that the comments from the audience be received.
All in favor? Opposed, that carries. Moves us to number five items for consideration. That brings us to five point one. Can I have a mover for that? Counselor Engelsdorfer and Brandar Horst.
It's an Engelsdorfer, Brandar Horst, Horst motion that council receive report RCF oh four, twenty twenty-three, that council approve the memorandum of understanding and direct the CAO and Director of Recreation and Community Facilities to execute the memorandum of understanding between the corporation of the county of Prince Edward and the Prince Edward County Minor Baseball Association, and that council direct staff as outlined in the MOU to waive the fee for use of the ball diamonds in exchange for in-kind work to maintain the clay fields.
Thank you. So Lisa, can you just give us a quick overview?
Certainly. Good afternoon, council through the chair. This report was drafted prior to the Prince Edward County Minor Baseball Association's annual meeting where they do their elections for their executives on Monday, April twenty-fourth. The intention of this report and the draft memorandum of understanding was to formalize the previous arrangement that was in place. The Prince Edward County Minor Baseball Association has been in place since nineteen ninety-five, but in two thousand and seven was when the development of the Field of Dreams and all three diamonds at one seventy Nile Street was completed. The, the association embarked on the clay fields, the lighting, all of the work that was done to develop those fields. And in turn, there was a non-formalized agreement that there was in-kind use. They had complete control of the operation of the fields and in turn looked after all of the grooming components. So that's what this draft MOU was in place, memorandum of understanding to formalize. So there could be a set of expectations for both the county and for the association. With the newly elected members and with the growing of the association, the maintenance of the field is something that is beyond their scope. And they're in really, in responding to the comments from the audience, the intention is that they would continue with the in-kind use and in turn gift the groomer, the clay groomer, which the county currently does not have possession of to be able to maintain the fields. The estimated cost of the groomer is approximately ten thousand dollars for the clay grooming. And so, so should council choose to want to move forward with that, my recommendation would be to enable the season to get started with a motion for in-kind use. And you may wish to want to refer staff to refer back on a more detailed report outlining the further details and a more detailed scope on how the arrangement would move forward.
Through the chair to council, just, just to be precise and to support the director here, what she's suggesting is to refer the entire report and this motion back because the MOU doesn't match. But if you would like to waive the, the fees for this year in exchange of knowing that we are working on this agreement and that we will be using their equipment to do so, then that would be an additional motion you could put in place. So you could defer this motion and put a different motion in place to waive the fees, something akin to that third part of the motion, but with this year's date might be a useful, just to help with the wording.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Counselor Pennell?
Not really a question, but I congratulate the groups on coming together. One of the things that's happened through the year, there's been a lot of, you know, person-to-person way of how you do business. Unfortunately, as councils change and that, different people may have different ideas. And I think it's extremely important that we maintain and keep the excellent working relationship that we've had with our volunteer, no matter where they are. And I applaud this move.
Any other questions? Yeah, Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the motion would just be the gifting of the groomer as opposed to the in-kind work to maintain the clay fields?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard. I would not make the motion about the gifting of the groomer because that really is what the new report and the new agreement needs to set the, we have to value that and then figure out how that relates over the years. So I think at this point, it seems that there's a willingness to let us use it if we do the work. So if, if that's the general understanding, it could be sorted out in the agreement. I do not think, and the director will correct me if I'm wrong, but we do not think it will be very long before we're back with a renewed agreement. But in the meantime, so we don't delay their season, we could be clear on the expectations regarding whether or not they have to pay the fees.
So just waiving the fees for twenty twenty-three. Thank you for bringing this forward. And I mean, this was kind of one of those understandings that maybe was never put on paper. I know that when, when my daughter and when it was coaching and they moved from the old Bloomfield diamond, and it was just such a, such a wonderful thing to, to have that diamond. And those of us that were parents, and actually my dad is a grandparent that spent, you know, hours out there on her hands and he's laying the sod that this is a, this field was built by the community and is, it is really a gem and something that, whatever we can do to, to make sure that they, that they get to use it. And because ball is one of those affordable sports for, for youth, and it's also a sport that you can play well into your senior years. So, thank you.
Counselor Prinzen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with, with those comments we have and with the direction of the CAO and the clerk and the director, I think the CAO has put a suggestion forward to allow them to start their season. I'm getting head nods, so I would, I would make that motion if I get a second or and I'm hoping everybody wants to, so that's good. I like that support. So I'll wait for the clerk to read out the motion and, and then we can go from there.
Okay, I had Counselor Pennell as a second or, are you, are we able to put it on the screen or no? No? Okay.
To the chair, it would be that council receive report RCF oh four, two, two, twenty twenty-three, that the fee be waived for the twenty twenty-three season for the Prince Edward County Minor Baseball Association, and that staff be directed to renegotiate an MOU between PEC MBA and the county.
Thank you. Will that, will that work? Lisa?
Through the chair, that's exactly what I need to get rolling this year.
I'm getting a nod from the director and the president of the organization, so I'm happy to.
Alrighty, so is there any questions on the motion that was just read? All, all in favor? And opposed? And that carries. Thank you. That moves us to five point two. So the County Road Forty-nine Council Working Group Terms of Reference. So can I have a mover for this one? Counselor, Mayor Ferguson, a second or? Counselor Brainy?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ferguson, Brainy motion that the County Road Forty-nine Council Working Group Terms of Reference be approved, and that Mayor Ferguson, Counselor Blank, Counselor Blank, Counselor Blank be appointed to the County Road Forty-nine Working Group.
Okay, thank you. Madam CAO?
So through the chair to council, just, this was, there's no report to go with because it's a pretty straightforward terms of reference, and this is responding to a motion that had come to us during budget, and I believe by Counselor Brainy and Counselor Harrison. And so the clerk and I have worked on this terms of reference and happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Ferguson.
It's going to take a while for everybody to get used to this. I put forward at one of the former meetings that Counselor Harrison and Brainy be, be on this committee because of, they brought forward the, the motion. Counselor Roberts indicated that, and I think quite rightly, put forward the, the name of Counselor Phil St. Jean to be part of this group, owing, I think partly to the fact that he has more history than anybody else sitting around the horseshoe of how the County Road Forty-nine developed over the years. So I would propose that he be, be added to this. And I'd like in, in thinking about this more, I don't know how we would arrange this, give, and it's unfortunate Counselor Roberts isn't here, but extend the offer that he participate as well as part of this, this group. But that's, Madam Clerk, I don't know how that would work.
So I, I think what we're going to do is we're just going to have open up nominations for, and you've nominated three people already, I guess.
Yep.
Harrison.
The mover and the second or, and Counselor St. Jean.
Yep, and then you mentioned Bill Roberts also.
To extend the offer to participate as well, yeah.
But he's not here, so he can't, can't say yes or no. So, and Harrison is the same, so they can't, they're not going to be able to.
Okay, then let's go through the process. Chair?
Through the chair, because this is Committee of the Whole, you could put all four names on, and then this, if, if, if either of them do not wish to be on it, they could pull the item when it comes to council and we could address it there. I, I don't believe the, the terms of reference, the terms of reference is draft at this stage, so we could, we, we could also change it to reflect. It was intended in the membership section to identify the members. So if you have four members, there's no names in it yet anyways, so we would have to update the terms of reference to finalize it. So we could do that at council.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused, I guess, but Counselor Pennell?
Yeah, I've got a couple, I don't know whether you call them concerns or not, but how do we get to the point of knowing exactly how to repair that? I was talking with one of the engineers on the weekend that was involved in this and the stir, and, and I'm talking about when the cement actually went in. And he says at the time it went in, that they thought there was lots enough concrete there, that if it was ground up, you can get a machine that takes the steel off, it would cut down probably at least fifty percent of the cost of doing the road. Have we checked this stuff out before we start doing? I think it's critical, and I don't want to jump the bandwagon and spend an extra fifteen million dollars that we don't have. Just a thought. I think we got to know where we're going.
Thank you. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Chair, and to Counselor Pennell and the rest of council. So a, a couple of things. First of all, this terms of reference is not about spending money or actually fixing this road. It's about advocating so other people will help us find the money to build this. So the terms of reference scope is not about construction, it is about seeking funding partners, whether that's other companies, groups, or levels of government. Secondly, in terms of the design and, and what, what has been in now two, if not three different budget years and not approved by council, given the high ticket price, this is based on a, a study that, a shovel-ready design study from Jewel Engineering that came to the previous term of council. And before we had that study, there was another study earlier that looked at options comparing asphalt and cement as the two different ways to build. And the previous term of council supported staff recommendation based on the consultant's report that the asphalt was the, the better choice for the longer term. So that is what we hired than Jewel Consulting to do the detailed design work and, and what has gotten us to a shovel-ready project that we're ready to move on should we get funding. So I just, for everyone's benefit who wasn't part of those earlier conversations, there have been detailed consulting reports, at least two of them, to help us understand the, the right way to move forward that were approved by council.
Thank you. Counselor Maynard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, maybe a small tweak in these, in these terms of reference, when it says engage the residents, business, and landowners along County Road Forty-nine, I'd like to make sure that that's clarified, that it's, because all the residents in Prince Edward County have a, have a stake in, in this road, and I think we all drive it at, at, at some point. So if we could kind of just wordsmith that a little bit to engage county residents, and then if you want to say and businesses and landowners along County Road Forty-nine, so that it's not obviously just people that live on, on Forty-nine. And so that's, is that just a, can we just put an and in there so that it does, so that it will catch more people than just the people that live on, on County Road, the residents on County Road Forty-nine? My second point is I, for, up until now, for all of our committees, working groups or whatever, we've had a nomination process. I, I would prefer that we went through with that today, and then of course, it can be changed at, it could be changed at, at council, just so that we're consistent on how we're, how we're appointing people, that we have a nomination process, and that then we have a, we get to have our second go at it when it comes back to council would be my preference.
Thank you, Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Maynard, you're? Go ahead. Counselor Maynard's corrected that, that the, round now, that the intent of the motion when I originally presented it for the working group was, this, this road is very beneficial to all residents of the county, so she's correct. To answer Counselor Pennell's question, the working group that was proposed was so that we didn't spend, we're not taking any money out of our budget, Counselor Pennell, it's to, to address the concerns that county residents have on Forty-nine, so we can have an active discussion moving forward to try to gain funds from those levels of government. So that's what the intent of the working group is. Thank you.
Counselor Pennell?
I hear what you're saying, but I have still one question. If we can go before province federally, we're going to be looking for money, and we may have to provide some too. But having said that, once again, if somebody was to come to me as a counselor and say, we got a wonderful idea, we're going to redo that road, what's it going to cost? Well, we can do it for thirty million. That doesn't give you any leeway as you're looking on, I think we've got it. What is the most cost-effective, efficient way to do the job? Then it's a lot easier to ask the money you really need rather than, I just wonder if it would set us back.
Are you asking a question to, or you just wanted to make a point?
I'm asking the question of council.
Okay.
Would you give a blank check to, if somebody comes as a constituent to do it? You'd want to know what's the best, most efficient way. And I'm not convinced we've got that right now. Unless somebody can tell me we have, and I will accept that.
Okay. Counselor St. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make the recommendation that all new counselors, this term counselors, receive copies of all of the reports that we've already taken care of as mentioned by the CAO earlier. And then everybody will be up to speed on the massive amount of work that has been done to address all of the questions, I think, and concerns that Counselor Pennell has, and certainly maybe circulated to all of us so that we can all refresh our memories. But it's certainly my recollection that all that work has been done. The information is there, and we just, I, I think there'll be a little bit of self-education. You're going to read a lot, trust me, there's a lot of information there. But I, I would just like to suggest that, that staff circulate that to all members of council, so we can all refresh our memories.
So, okay, thank you, and I will, it's Counselor Engelsdorfer.
Thanks. If we are going to do a nomination process, are we going to do that? Or, because if we are, then I'll nominate Counselor Brainy to be on the working group.
I got, I got one more, I got one more counselor, or, sorry, I got the mayor to speak, and then I'll explain how we're moving forward.
No, I was going to, I was going to make the same suggestion as Counselor St. Jean, that to be fair to the, the new members of council, they be brought up to speed fully on the, not just the documents, and there are plenty of engineering documents, but also the deputations that have been made to the Ministers of Infrastructure, two or three Ministers of Transportation, that include the pricing that's based on those reports. And we don't want to go back and undertake more reports of this nature because they cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to undertake. But I think if we could provide those, that information will be very helpful and guide this through.
Thank you. So this is how I see this unfolding, is Counselor Maynard made a good point. We, we elect all our committees, so handpicking is not really sufficient in my eyes anyways, that's not democratic. So we'll do the democratic way. Counselor, Mayor Ferguson has gave four names, there's three spots, so are you going to make a motion that you have, we have four spots on this working group?
Yep, sure, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so make a motion then, and if you can get a second or?
Okay, Counselor Pennell's going to second. Ferguson, Pennell motion that a four-spot be provided to the counselor from Safiasburg, who is most affected.
No, no, not, we're not, it's, it's four spots open.
Make an adjustment to the terms of reference, that a four-spot be included then. Counselor Pennell has seconded it.
You, you got that, Madam Clerk? Okay, so are there questions on the motion that's just put forward here? And Counselor Pennell was the second or?
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay, that carries. So we now, so we have four people on there.
Which is?
We got four spots.
Through the chair, if I may, I could lead the nomination process if you'd like, so we follow our procedural bylaw. When are we ready to start that? Please turn, okay, so the nomination process is now officially open. Please turn, okay, so the nomination process is now officially open. Could I receive nominations for the first position?
I'll nominate Counselor Brainy.
Counselor Brainy, do you accept this nomination?
Yeah, I would nominate, I would nominate Dave Harrison and Bill, even though they're not here, they both said they would be interested in doing it, so...
But just so you know, they have to be here to accept. So if they're not, if they're not here to accept, you can nominate them. If we hear nothing from them, we move on and elect other, or nominate other people. So you've nominated Counselor Roberts and Counselor Harrison? Go ahead, you can ask if they're, if they accept.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
We're going to let the clerk go. Do these, so go ahead.
Unfortunately, they're not here, and we cannot accept nominations in absentia.
May I?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Harrison was on here because he was asked if he wanted to participate and agreed.
So I will say again, I understand that, but he is not here to accept the nomination. So if I'm wrong, you can correct me, Madam Clerk? If he's not here to accept the nomination?
Make any difference in two weeks.
Through the chair, so our process is outlined in our procedural bylaw. If you'd like to waive the rules of the procedural bylaw, you're welcome to do that, but that would not be my advice. But as Counselor Maynard had pointed out, we could also continue this at the council meeting.
That's all I was going to say, is that they can be inserted, we can go through this process at the council meeting.
Okay, so the last two nominations, Counselor Pennell got on. So is there any other nominations? Counselor Prinzen?
I'll nominate Counselor Nyman.
Do I have to leave the chair?
Through the chair, no, that's okay, because technically I'm in the chair position right now, running this nomination, so do you accept?
Sure.
Excellent. For the third nomination.
Counselor Branderhorst.
Because I don't think it's been officially declared, I nominate Counselor St. Jean.
Counselor St. Jean, do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
And we need one more, right?
Or wait till council.
Okay, so we can leave that one vacant?
Correct.
So the next step then is to, a motion to accept all nominations?
Correct. We just need a mover and second or, well, Mayor Ferguson and Counselor Brainy already put it on the floor, so we would just insert the three names.
Okay.
So if Mayor Ferguson would like to read that, and we can call the vote.
Ferguson, Ferguson, Brainy, motion that the County Road 49 Council Working Group Terms of Reference be approved, and that Mayor Ferguson, Counselor Brainy, Counselor St. Jean, Counselor Nyman, and then as yet, the fourth member be appointed to the County Road 49 Council Working Group. Is that satisfactory, Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, you forgot the amendment of the adding the fourth person. So it'll be carried as amended, once the vote is called.
Right. As amended.
Okay. All righty, so no questions, all in favor? And opposed, that carries. Clarification, okay, sure.
Can I just clarify that the, where it says engage with residents, has that been fixed as a, just as a clerical correction? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to, oh, presentations, sorry. So it's Kristin Myers and Lisa Severson, Director of Communications, Eastern Ontario Regional Network, EORN, to address committee regarding the EORN annual update. And they're both at the podium, so you have 20 minutes, and I'll let you know when you have two minutes left.
Great, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm Lisa Severson, I'm the Communications Director for the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. Jim Pine gives his regrets today, he double-booked himself, and so Kristin and I are here with you today. If I can make technology work. So thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I will begin. So just a little bit of an overview of what we'll be providing as an update today. So we'll just tell you a little bit about who EORN is, as a reminder, and a bit about our projects that we've done over the last 13 years, and what our initiatives for 2023 are. So as many of you know, the Eastern Ontario Regional Network is a not-for-profit that was created by the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus in 2010. We incorporated so we could have funding flow through to us. And our main objectives and our core values are to do work on regional projects that provide innovative solutions, and we work very hard to leverage public-private partnerships. A little bit about our history, for those that may not know who we are. In 2010, we received funding from the federal and provincial government, as well as the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus members, and six of the Eastern Ontario Mayors Caucus members, to work on a broadband project. At that time, we had started working on a design in 2008. Broadband, if you had up to 1.5 megabits, that was considered high-speed internet. So our goals at, our goal at the time was to bring a 10-by-1 service to residents and homes in Eastern Ontario. And we completed that project in 2015, and we were able to connect over 400,000 homes and businesses in the region with that 10-by-1. We know that, especially during COVID, that 10-by-1 really isn't enough anymore, and we congratulate and applaud the federal and provincial governments for providing funding to ISPs to roll out 50 by 10 to homes and businesses. And from what we understand, those projects will be completed by 2025 and 2027. So I know there's good things coming to most of Eastern Ontario, and that's, that's a great, that's a great thing for the region. So a little, there's usually confusion when we talk about wireless and broadband, and wireless and cellular. So a fixed wireless is, you may have an antenna at my home, I live just outside of Prescott, and we have an old TV antenna that we have a receiver, and it's a point-to-point. So I have fixed wireless broadband at my home, and it works okay, but I can't take that broadband with me when I need to travel, or it's only a stationary type of solution. So the cellular, the project we're working on now, is a wireless. And as many of you know, the cell towers are constructed, the equipment is added, and you can take your devices, your phones, your iPads, anything that is able to connect, you can take those with you and work or use them for pleasure, however you need to use your devices. And that's a wireless cellular technology. So a little bit about our current cell gap project, it's our timeline. In 2014, the MPs and MPPs of Eastern Ontario met with the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. At that meeting, they requested that the EOWC do something to fix the gaps in the region for cell coverage. They'd be going either to Toronto or Ottawa, and were not able to conduct work while they were driving and commuting. So the EOWC asked EORN to do an analysis of the gaps in coverage and capacity in the region, and that was completed. And in 2017, we had prepared a business case, which we presented to the federal and provincial governments. And in 2020, they finally agreed that they would support the project. It took us almost 10 months to negotiate a contract, so our contract is with the Ontario government, it's called a transfer payment agreement. And in 2020, we issued the request for proposal. We had two proponents respond, so Bell Canada and Rogers were the, were the two that had submitted. And upon review, with the amount of money that we had committed from the federal provincial governments and from the EOMC, nine of those members of the 10 are participating in this project and the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. We were only able to fund one proponent, and the successful proponent was Rogers. Again, we negotiated a contract with them, work began, and in 2022, we had the first towers go live. Oh no, I'm pressing the wrong one, that's why. So this is just, and usually what can happen, but I've only sent PDFs to the clerk, is if it's in PowerPoint mode, the little car will go across the screen to demonstrate the gap, so my apologies for that. But as you can see on the screen, the HD level, so high definition, the closer you are to that tower, the better connectivity or the ability to use certain types of technology, the closer you are to the tower, that's the high-def segment of our project. SD is standard definition, so if you wanted to do banking or checking your email, you could do that with that type of service. And the outer ring is the cellular, which is being able to make that call, and especially a 911 call, that's very important. So as you go across the region, so the tower in the beige etop color, that would have been an original tower, and we're building towers on either side of that to make sure there's no lapses in service as you're using the network. And I know in Prince Edward County, you have, you're a tourist destination. So we know that in peak times, those cell towers are at capacity or over capacity, so it's important for the use that there are towers being built to manage not only gaps in coverage, but the capacity, the number of people that are using that tower. And a good example we use of capacity is the last ice storm around Easter. Many folks lost power, especially down closer to my home in Prescott, and so they didn't have access to the broadband in their home. So they used the cell towers to be able to connect, to see when they may be getting power back, et cetera. And it puts load on those cell towers, and that's what we're also creating with this project, is the ability to have capacity in the network. So what are the goals of our project? So in 99% of the region, in our demand area, where people live, people work, and people travel, on major roadways, you'll be able to use your cell phone or devices to make that call that you need to make. In 95% of the region, you'll be able to get, again, use standard definitions, so you'd be able to use your, your devices to do banking, emailing, et cetera. And in 85% of the area, and we think this is very crucial, that high-definition service will be key, because, for example, if your emergency services, so if your paramedics are en route to the hospital from an accident scene, they can livestream into the hospital, and they can be triaging those patients in high definition. And that's, that's a game changer. Or another example is, I was at another meeting, and I was, to be on a course of, an educational course for my position, and I had to do it from the parking lot. And I was able to log into the Zoom account and do my meeting that way. So it is a game changer for folks if they're traveling or they don't have good broadband services. So here's a project overview, and I'm just going to go to my own notes, because I'm older and I'm having a hard time seeing that on the screen, so excuse me. So there are 312 existing sites across Eastern Ontario that Rogers has equipment on now, and those are all, all 312 sites will be upgraded with 5G technology. Right now, we have 297 of those 312 completed. There are approximately 260 new sites being constructed across the region, and 13 are completed. And we know that there are 74 co-locations, so there are either existing towers or third-party towers that will be built, that they either, that they share real estate on those towers, so Rogers could go on a Bell or a TELUS tower, or it could be an independent third-party, that they would lease space on that tower and, and put their equipment. And we know when we were planning out this project, we heard from all councils across the region, that the more you could utilize existing infrastructure and share, the better. And, and that's what we've tried to do with this project. All work at this point in time is expected to be completed by 2025, and at this point in time, from our analysis, we will meet or exceed the project's goals that have been set. After the project is built, we have a five-year contract with the, with Rogers to ensure that they maintain and upgrade the network as required. So what are the benefits of the project? And I think I've touched on a few of them already. Again, closing the coverage gaps to help you stay connected, and it's increasing that capacity in the network. Improve public safety, so when you have to make that 911 call, you have the ability to do so. Improve municipal services, so for your public works crews, your paramedics that are out on the road, it'll improve their ability to be connected. And of course, economic development opportunities and tourism experiences will be key. And we do know that those new towers will also allow for future deployment of a fixed broadband type of service in the more rural areas as technology rolls out. So the financial funding, as stated earlier, the Government of Ontario and the Government of Canada have each contributed up to $71 million. Rogers is investing up to or more than, depending on how it, but they have to do at a minimum investment of at least $150 million into our region, which is huge. And EOWC and nine members of the EOMC are contributing a little bit over $10 million. Prince Edward County has contributed $236,000. And thank you, our payments have, are complete, and we appreciate that very much. We're now, staff is now working on a return on, on investment. And right now, preliminary, the estimate is anywhere between 20 to 1 to 51 upon project completion, and we'll have more accurate data when we come back for future annual updates. So what does this mean for the region and Prince Edward County? Again, 312 existing towers are being upgraded, 297 are completed. There are 260 planned new tower builds, 13 are completed. 74 co-locations are planned. This number is a bit out of date, we get monthly data from our partners with Rogers, and that came in last week, but we had already submitted the presentation, so that number isn't 15, it's actually 28 that are now done. And Land Use Authority, we need, Land Use Authority on all of the planned new tower builds, and we have 150 at this point in time completed. So for Prince Edward County, you have nine tower upgrades, those have been completed already. You have seven new towers to be built in the county, two are completed. We have one co-location, it's yet to be finished, and seven of the Land Use Authority requirements for the seven new towers, five are already done. So we'd like to thank your staff. Donc nous voudrions remercier votre personnel et les councils pour les amener. Plus les choses sont complétées, plus vous allez entrer dans le calendrier de construction pour Rogers. Un peu sur les étapes de construction. Donc le groupe de realité à Rogers sortir, ils trouvent une localisation. Ils négocient une location avec un propriétaire privé ou un municipalité. Ce que nous devons faire pour notre projet est que pour chaque new build, donc pour 260 sites, nous devons faire des analyses archéologiques de la première et de la deuxième étape et des assessments naturelles en partenariat avec les communautés des First Nations dans l'Ontario. Et puis ça va à l'Autorité de Re利用. Quelque soit le processus à fonctionner chez chacun des municipalités. Une fois que ça a été complété, nous devons notifier la province et leur dire que ces équipes cellulaire vont avancer. Et puis nous notifions Rogers et ensuite la préparation de sites. Donc ils doivent faire des tests de sol, nettoyage de terrain, etc., pour être prêts à construire ces équipes cellulaire. Ce processus peut prendre de l'abord, je vais dire probablement 12 mois à 24 mois. Donc c'est un long processus pour commencer ces équipes cellulaire. Et tout au long du projet, nous serons consultés avec nos communautés indigènes. Donc un peu sur la responsabilité de consulter. EORN a été déléguée à faire la responsabilité de consulter avec 18 communautés indigènes et organisations par le nom. Donc avec les gouvernements fédéraux et provinciaux. Nous et le Conseil des Députés d'Ontario sentons que c'est important que tous les résidents de notre région reçoivent la couverture, y compris les communautés. Et EORN, comme je l'ai dit, nous complétons les analyses archéologiques et naturelles. Et nous sommes actuellement à 128 de ces sites qui sont complets. À jour à jour, nous avons eu plus de 120 réunions et des appels téléphoniques avec les communautés indigènes et organisations. Et nous développons aussi des documents de formation pour aider le personnel dans le domaine. Donc un peu sur les équipes cellulaire. La plupart des équipes cellulaire dans notre projet sont entre 60 mètres et 90 mètres. Ça supporte la technologie 4G et 5G. Et avoir 4G et 5G aide à la capacité et c'est une construction pour le futur. Donc nous avons beaucoup de capacité dans le réseau et le réseau peut évoluer comme nous avançons. Donc ce est une diapositive intéressante. Quelle est l'équipement? Donc les radios blancs que vous pouvez voir dans la photo, ceux sont en fait environ la hauteur d'une porte normale. Mais ils pesent la même quantité qu'un réfrigérateur. Donc quand vous cherchez à ajouter ces équipes cellulaire, vous devez s'assurer que la tour a la capacité pour la partage de vent, l'ice, etc. Donc comment ils construisent généralement une nouvelle tour? Ils le font en sections. Ils ont ce prêt sur le sol et puis ils l'acculent avec un bousquet. Juste un peu sur... Où est-ce? Donc quelles sont nos initiatives pour 2023? Donc Rogers, leur but pour cette année fiscale. Donc notre année fiscale commence le 1er avril au 31 mars 2024. Donc nous planifions avoir 80 à 85 nouvelles équipes cellulaire et co-locations construites dans cette année fiscale. La plupart des upgrades sur les équipes cellulaire existantes seront complets. EORN a un nouveau bureau de directeurs. Avec l'élection en octobre, six de nos membres n'ont pas retourné. Nous avons un bureau de neuf. Donc nous avons six nouveaux membres et trois retournant. Et donc nous amenons ce bureau à la vitesse. Nous travaillons avec le Council des leadership d'Ontario et le Council des Députés d'Ontario sur leur initiative de logement de la habitation. Et je comprends que Mr. Pine et le président Eamon étaient ici et avaient donné un brief sur ça. Donc EORN est en train de le faire. Nous travaillons aussi avec l'EOLC sur leur système de permise.
Vous avez deux minutes.
Deux minutes, je suis presque terminée. Nous investigerons comment nous pouvons travailler avec le municipalité sur leur réseau de sécurité publique. Donc si vos départements de fire ont besoin d'aide pour placer des radios sur des équipes cellulaire qui sont en train de être construites, etc. Et nous sommes en train de aider Infrastructure Ontario avec certains de leurs programmes de broadband ASAP. Donc nous sommes en train de coordonner les ISP pour venir aux councils municipaux et fournir un update sur ce qui est en train de être mis en œuvre dans leurs communautés. Et nous travaillons sur un approche municipal pour les manques de sécurité cyber. Et ce sont les choses que nous travaillons pendant l'approbation du bureau. Donc ils vont faire... Notre bureau est entré en place le 6 avril. Et ça sera présenté à eux en mai. Et ça complète ma présentation. Si quelqu'un a des questions, s'il vous plaît envoyez-les à Jason St Pierre, qui est notre nouveau PDG à EORN, ou moi-même. Nous sommes contents de répondre à toutes les questions que vous pouvez avoir.
Merci, merci Lisa. Donc, y a-t-il des questions à Lisa sur ce qu'elle a présentée ici? Le conseil de Saint Jean?
Merci, M. le Président. Et merci Lisa beaucoup pour votre présentation. C'est toujours bon de savoir ce qui se passe en ce qui concerne les manques cellulaire. Et les improvements que nous savons tous sont très nécessaires ici dans le County Prince Edward. Donc parlons de improvements très nécessaires. Pouvez-vous peut-être étendre un peu sur quand les manques cellulaire du County Prince Edward seront fermées? Une timeline, je suppose, c'est ce que je demande.
Je pense que Kristen a des informations qu'elle partagera avec vous dans la prochaine session ferme.
Ok.
Et nous pourrions parler plus de ça après cette présentation, si ça marche.
Je suis bon avec ça, merci.
Merci, le conseil de Maynard.
Merci, M. le Président. Merci pour votre présentation. Comme nous l'avons vu, nous faisons maintenant un progrès continu sur le cellulaire. J'espère que les gens ne travaillent pas pendant qu'ils conduisent ou voyent. Nous sommes toujours en train de recevoir des retours sur les nouvelles équipes cellulaire. Et je me demande si la nouvelle construction, s'ils utilisent des appareils de protection parce que la radiation, surtout quand vous êtes au niveau du 5G, est de préoccupation. Et si vous n'avez pas cette réponse, vous pouvez revenir à moi.
Donc je sais que ils ont des protections pour la lumière. Je peux prendre ça à la team technique et faire cette enquête. Je n'ai pas cette information, désolée.
Et puis ma deuxième question à ce sujet est: Donc nous allons continuer avec les manques cellulaire. Mais le fibre de la maison est quelque chose que la plupart de nous aimerait vraiment. Et je veux juste dire que parce que le données cellulaire est si cher en Ontario, en Canada en tant que tout, et le moins de compétition nous avons, plus ça sera. Ça, vous savez, Internet à la maison. J'espère, comme vous l'avez dit, qu'il y avait des fonds. Mais quand ce projet sera terminé, si c'est le prochain... Parce que c'est...
Je pense que la PDG avait sa main levée.
Merci. Au travers du président, le conseil de Maynard et le reste du conseil, je veux juste rappeler, c'est un peu confus parce que c'est aussi Rogers qui a gagné le projet d'installation de broadband. Mais il n'est pas géré par EORN. C'est avec le county directement. Et nous avons maintenant commencé, nous sommes en train de recevoir des permets. Donc si quelqu'un est intéressé par le fibre à la porte, ce genre de planning d'installation, il y a une section sur notre site web sous le bouton Business. Et c'est une section sur l'expansion de broadband. Il y a un mappe qui sera mis à jour lorsque nous commencerons. Donc vous pouvez voir les routes qui ont en fait travaillé au fil du temps. Donc c'est un projet différent, pas impliquant EORN, mais aussi en train de avancer cette saison. Et nous devrions commencer à voir ça au cours des prochains deux ans.
Juste pour que je sois clair, ça est ouvert au public, ce mapping?
Oui, c'est sur notre site public.
Ok, merci.
Dans le bouton Business.
Ok, merci. Aucune autre question? Peux-je avoir une motion pour accepter la présentation? Brandeherst et Princeton?
Merci beaucoup au conseil de me permettre de présenter, merci.
Ceci est une motion de Brandeherst et Princeton que Lisa Severson, directrice des communications d'Ontario Regional Network, EORN, doit adresser au comité concernant une mise à jour annuelle d'EORN. Est reçue?
Tous en faveur. Opposés. Carrie. Merci.
Le président a juste vérifié. C'est en fait dans le bouton résidence si vous êtes intéressé.
Dans le bouton résidence.
Le broadband est dans le bouton résidence de notre site web, merci.
Ok, merci. Et c'est bon pour le public, c'est bon pour le public de savoir. Merci. Donc ça nous amène à la cinquième session ferme. Peux-je avoir un moteur pour ça? Pour nous amener à la ferme, le conseil de Maynard et le conseil de Hirsch?
Maynard, motion de Hirsch. Le comité est maintenant entré dans la session ferme et considère la litigation ou la litigation potentielle, y compris les questions avant les tribunaux administratifs affectant les municipalités ou les bureaux locaux en suite à la section 239E de l'Acte municipal.
Tous en faveur? Carrie.
Je voudrais juste souligner un oversight administratif de la bureau. Donc ça inclut, ça devrait aussi dire une position, plan ou procédure qui n'est pas ouverte au public. Donc ça serait la deuxième raison que vous allez être fermé. Et je veux que ça soit transparent.
Yep, ok. Tout le monde en faveur? Ok, merci. Ok, nous allons passer à la ferme.
...